Well, welcome everyone. The September twenty seven, excuse me. That was on my list, sorry. The October eleven twenty twenty three Prosper Portland Board of Commissioners meeting is now convened. Pam, will you please call the role?
Commissioner Alvarez. Commissioner Slick.
Here.
Commissioner Stone Meyer Wesley.
Present.
Commissioner Myers.
Here.
Chair Cruz.
Here, thank you. Okay, I have a brief notice to read. As required by state law, Prosper Portland has provided an opportunity for the public to access and attend this meeting in person. There's also a YouTube livestream video of the meeting, and the public has had the opportunity to arrange in advance to provide virtual testimony. At this time, the public may provide written testimony to the commission by emailing prospercommissioners@prosperportland.us. Again, prospercommissioners@prosperportland.us. Thank you. Okay, next up is Commissioner Reports. Does anybody have anything they'd like to report this month? Commissioner Myers, you have something?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and start. September twenty second, I attended the Noche Bay with Latino Net, or excuse me, with Latino Network. And on the twenty ninth, I attended the Metro Urban Growth Report Cooperative Working Group. And October fourth through the seventh, we were in Milwaukee at the Best Practice Tour.
Great, thank you. Anybody else have anything they'd like to report?
I was with Commissioner Myers in Milwaukee and also at the Noche Baya event. And that is it.
Excellent. Thank you.
On my end, I attended the Hacienda DC Committee that event on Friday. It was really well attended and really appreciated the program and the speaker that they brought to share their stories. So I would say participate with the Prosper team on that.
Great.
And I attended the Hispanic Chamber event. With Commissioner Cruz and Director Brannon.
Yes, thank you. I attended that too, and I also attended the Literary Arts Gala. Thank you. Okay, next up is the Executive Director Report with Kimberly Brannon.
Thank you Chair Cruz and Commissioners. As we've all just been discussing, we are definitely in fall event season. So you know, I will just note personally that it is very heartening to be able to share these events in community and to be together in person. And we're really proud to support an array of events. I'll note a few that I wasn't able to mention last time. We supported the Urban League's Equal Opportunity Dinner event on September twenty eighth. Hacienda's event that was noted this past October sixth. And then just last night, the Architecture Foundation of Oregon's gala honored Ermont Colas Jr. of Colas Construction for a Lifetime Achievement Award. It was a very touching and meaningful event. And tonight, right after the board meeting, Micro Enterprise Services of Oregon, or MISOs, doing their Breaking the Glass event. So looking forward to celebrating some of our tremendous partners and the work that they're doing. Also, last Wednesday, September twenty seventh, right after our board meeting, I moderated NAOP Oregon's, which is a Commercial Real Estate Development Association's event discussing the office market in Portland and highlighting businesses that have recommitted to the central city. So I just want to note and appreciate that Miller Nash, Moda Health, and ZGF Architects, who were represented as panelists, have all each recommitted to being tenants in downtown spaces. So it was a really good conversation around what is the value proposition of being in our central city and how we can continue to strengthen that long term. Yesterday, I was fortunate to moderate a panel discussion at Elevate, sponsored by Urban Land Institute around housing in Portland and in our region. Want to appreciate the Urban Land Institute team for providing the opportunity to have this discussion and really want to acknowledge the panelists from the HUD field office in Oregon, so Brian Guinea, Patricia Rojas from Metro, and Damian Hall, who plays a number of hats, including being co-chair of the Governor's Housing Production Council for sharing their incredible insights and perspectives. One of the things that we heard at the ULI Summit at the beginning from Greg Bell was that we really need to focus on what is going well. So it's a practice that I look forward to bringing into meetings of just focusing a little bit on what are those things that are going well. And so I want to share a little bit with the board about some of those things that we see that are going well. So I noticed, mentioned last time, that ESCO recommitted and is expanding in our central city. And wanted to note that the Prosper team also worked with Revan Optics on their recent move to Northwest Portland. And then you might have heard about Portland Gear that is moving to a new space on the corner of Southwest Tenth and Harvey Milk, next to the Ace and just a few blocks away from Powell's Books. And we want to continue to share more stories like this, not only because we're really appreciative of business leaders who are recommitting to our central city, but also to remind everyone of the expertise that Prosper Portland can bring to bear and the tools that we do have to assist businesses, both large and small, in staying and growing in Portland. Some other good news that we were able to share, I'm pleased to note that the twenty twenty three recipients of the Social Equity and Economic Development, or SEED, S-E-E-D, program were announced last week. The program ensures that organizations who foster social justice, economic development, and educational support with a focus on communities that were most adversely impacted by the prohibition on cannabis are supported. There were more than one hundred and forty applications. It was a very robust process to determine the organizations. And there were ultimately twelve organizations that will receive grants ranging from forty thousand dollars all the way up to two hundred thousand dollars. And I want to appreciate in particular Akil Patterson for their work in leading this undertaking, which bridged two organizations. It started when Akil was at Civic Life and now has completed as they moved, as he's moved over to Prosper Portland. So really appreciate his work along with Robert Smiths and Chabri Vickers and Shae Flare DeBattines and Justin Douglas's. I want to remind folks that the third round of five rounds of Prosper Portland's Small Business Restore Grant closes later today. You'll recall that this is funded by the American Rescue Plan Act and that the Restore Grant Program provides one-time direct grants to support small businesses who've had hardships as a result of the pandemic. It's intended to help stabilize small businesses that have a retail space with up to twenty five thousand dollars in reimbursements for expenses related to security, prevention of theft, specific operational expenses, damages, and vandalism over the past few years. It's a highly competitive grant process, so we understand that the need is greater than the resources, but we do encourage people to apply. And if you've already applied, you will be asked and you will, you can be resubmitted. You can go to prosperportland.us/restore for more information. And then finally, I want to note that in celebration of Portland's production and media industry and to support local businesses and boost engagement within our central city, the Events and Film Office at Prosper Portland is excited to activate downtown Portland vacant storefronts with a series of movies and TV shows that have been filmed or produced here in Portland. We're calling these Movies on Morrison. The series started today and will run every Wednesday from today through November eighth. They play from eleven AM to one PM on Wednesdays. There are two locations at Second and Third and Southwest Morrison. The activations are intended to elevate Portland's connections to locally produced TV and films. There are going to be giveaways, inspired activities, and exclusive viewings. And I really encourage everyone who is working downtown or visiting downtown to stop by either location any Wednesday between now and November eighth. So with that, we'll turn it back to you Chair Cruz, thank you.
Great, thanks very much. It's a great, great report. Okay, next up, we have minutes to approve for the September twenty seven twenty twenty three board meeting. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Thank you. Any second?
So second.
Great, thank you. All right, all those in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Minutes are approved. All right, next up is public comment. Pam, do we have any public comment?
None received.
Okay, thank you. As I mentioned earlier, the public can provide public comment to the commission by emailing prospercommissioners@prosperportland.us. Okay, next up, we have our regular agenda. Item six is an action item. Authorizing acquisition of a tenant in common interest with the Port of Portland at three five five six Northwest Front Avenue. And Brian Moore, Joe Molesky, and Ken Anderton are here to speak today.
Good afternoon, Chair Cruz, Commissioners, Executive Director Brannon. I'm Joe Molesky. My pronouns are he/him. I'm a project manager in our development and investment group. We can, we can start our presentation now, please. And go to the next slide, please. So this agenda item requests approval to enter into a acquire tenants in common interest at the former Port of Portland Terminal Two to support our partners in development of the Innovation Center focused on mass timber and housing solutions. Next slide, please. I'm, I'm joined in this presentation by Brian Moore, our development manager with our Development Investment Group. Brian will summarize how this tenants in common agreement is in alignment with our goals in our advanced Portland inclusive economic development strategy and also summarize our partnership in the region and at Terminal Two with, with the Port of Portland. We are also have joined by our guest and partner Ken Anderton. He's a senior manager in real estate development at the Port of Portland. Ken is a leader on the port team and will present the innovation campus vision as well as the formation of the Oregon Mass Timber Coalition, successful application of the Build Back Better Federal Grant Funds of over forty one million to develop and operate a mass timber innovation campus. Ken is completing a rare commission doubleheader today as he presented the tenants in common agreement to the Port of Portland Commission this morning, and he is with us this afternoon. So thanks, Ken, for joining us. Lastly, I will present the terms of the tenants in common agreement. And I want to turn it over now to Brian to discuss alignment with Advanced Portland. Next slide, please.
Thank you, Joe. Chair Cruz, Commissioners, and Executive Director Brannon. As you may recall, our priority is to drive the implementation of our economic development strategy at Advanced Portland. And so the staff team working on this partnership with the port has prioritized the project because it helps us move towards success on outcome one point one point one, the traded sector job and business growth and outcome three point eight housing production. You might be asking yourself how a single project can both meet both housing construction and a traded sector industry growth. And the answer is, I think, as exciting as it is quintessentially Oregonian. The site in question, the Terminal Two site, will help support growth in mass timber building products, which is one of our traded sector industries, and modular off-site housing production. Our guest presenter, Ken Anderton from the port, will share the details of the project. But first, I wanted to touch on the long history of the partnership between Prosper Portland and the Port of Portland. Next slide, please. So dating back to nineteen eighty six, the relationship between Prosper and the port has really catalyzed major community economic and transportation investments that have driven the growth of our city and region. The projects include, of course, establishing the Airport Way Tiff District, and then within that, the construction of the Max Redline to the airport and creating new commercial lands that provide some of the best retail opportunities in the region. And now we're expanding on the success of that relationship in the partnership with regarding Terminal Two. Really growing traded sector, mass timber industry, and innovation in housing production. Ken, would you take over and share the exciting details of the, of the project? Next slide.
Absolutely. And thank you, Commissioner Cruz, or Chair Cruz and Prosper Portland Commissioners for allowing me to present today. And as Director Brannon mentioned, we have to celebrate what is going well. And I think this project is really going well in terms of the partnerships we've created, the doors we've opened, and the potential to create this mass timber campus, innovation campus in Portland, and this excitement we see also across the country. This effort really started back in twenty twenty after the wildfires. Forty-two hundred homes were lost. A group of us belonging to ports, state agencies, universities, developers got together and started a think tank of how can we move the ball in terms of housing production, but also economic development and job creation. And out of that, we formed the Oregon Mass Timber Coalition, which is Business Oregon, Oregon Department of Forestry, Department of Land Conservation and Development, and Talaw Design Institute, which is a collaboration of the University of Oregon and Oregon State plus the port. Next slide, please. And then we got the nation excited about this. We want a, a competition that was to, had two phases to it. There's five hundred and twenty-nine applicants, sixty were chosen. And then you had to enter into a phase two of the competition, and only twenty-one were chosen across the US. We've had visitors from the Assistant Secretary of Commerce, Secretary Castillo, as well as various federal agencies that have wanted to join in and learn more about how they can deploy mass timber. Also, part of the, part of this opened the door to further competitions. University of Oregon won the National Science Foundation award just recently, and it continues to gather momentum. So I won't read you all the different funding. What I did behind the grant was, is to look into the forests, make them more sustainable, utilize, you know, utilize advanced technology to harvest, utilize best management practices and sustainability, create a equitable workforce across the supply chain of housing all the way from forestry to housing production. And then make key investments in all these different areas like research and development, manufacturing capabilities, code changes, et cetera. And we tried to look at this holistically as a ecosystem of mass timber and more importantly, using mass timber in construction for, for housing. Next slide, please. We also worked with Hacienda to lobby to get some prototypes. I mean, so if you want to innovate in housing, you've got to do prototyping. You've got to do research and development, and you've got to do things differently. And you just can't keep doing the same thing over and over again. And so the state legislature awarded five million dollars to Hacienda, to the port, and we directed that through Hacienda to do a prototype project where six, six sites were selected across Oregon to get these mass casitas. Additionally, while we were doing this, Modami, who's a Portland-based company, Tom Codyu- Additionally, while we were doing this, Modami, who's a Portland-based company, Tom Cody owns Project PDX, had interest in locating the T2. And they recently located to building two oh five. He's currently under construction and will be doing missing build housing, stick build modular housing. And we, we have others that have interest at T2 as well. And part of this is, you know, really establishing credibility that we're going to be able to develop the site and create manufacturing, having manufacturers who want to locate here and create, you know, a center of gravity around mass timber and housing production. Next slide, please. So just a little bit about the campus. It's roughly about forty acres. It's right off of Front Avenue. It has excellent transportation access, rail access. It's desirable. It's close in to a skilled workforce. And it's close in to vendors and folks that may want to locate there in terms of housing production. We anticipate the University of Oregon to build an acoustics, state art acoustics research lab as part of the EDA funding. Oregon State will be building a fire test lab in Corvallis to add to the research capabilities. And it's going to be part of this overall infrastructure or ecosystem investment of mass timber. By developing out T2, we plan to have incubator, incubator spaces for small companies as well. And also, we are going to be training workforce specifically in mass timber that will skill them up to the future of, I believe the statistic out there right now is for every five boomers that, for every five boomers that retire, only one takes their place in housing construction and in trades. So we really need to skill up our workers. Next slide, please. Yeah, this is a little bit about T2. It was a bulk, bulk commodity marine terminal. And it's really that these functions have consolidated along both the Willamette and Columbia rivers. And it started to become outdated roughly about twenty years ago. And we started to look in twenty eighteen for some different ideas about how to utilize this really valuable piece of property. And we landed, like I mentioned, in really in twenty twenty through twenty twenty-one on this concept of this housing campus. We would still retain a small part, small portion for marine activities because we have the US Corps of Engineers dredging base, see some ships more on, on the docks there. But most importantly, we're looking at taking the balance of, of the acreage to creating this campus. Next slide. To, to really, when you have an industrial, my team has developed multiple business parks. And whenever you look at a site, you have to look at what the site constraints are and what are the site attributes, what are the strengths, what are the weaknesses? And how do you address those issues and what tenants might you attract? In this particular instance, it's a, we're looking to really focus in on housing production. So we did a lot of research in terms of, you know, what does it take for modular manufacturers? What do they need in terms of circulation on the site? What do they need in terms of lay down areas for storage of these modules? And then what type of research capabilities do they need and workforce do they need? And so what we did is we created this master plan that looks at a mix of existing buildings, which are the ones in gray, with new buildings, which are in blue and green. And in looking at the variety of different development concepts there, it's an expensive site to develop, much like any site along the river or within the floodplain of the Columbia River or Willamette River system, or even industrial properties that are, have super fund status or brownfield status. This is kind of a classic example of your expensive industrial site that's left over. You have to put money into to bring it back to life. And so the big issues here really are seismic sustainability issues, so liquefaction, the lateral shifting. And part of the EDA money was to create a deep soil mixing project on each end of the site that would be under the buildings that would protect it from any seismic activity. And that's really it in a nutshell. We have, like I said, we've seen a lot of interest. We've toured, just recently, we had the US Corps of Engineers, the entire region of of South, Southwest Washington and Washington, twenty-nine people, senior leaders, a general. We've had the EPA, DEQ tour that, that are Senate Senators and Congress Representatives and the governor out here. And there truly is a lot of excitement in delivering on our promises here. And I think that's the end of my slides.
Yeah, could you go to the next slide, please? Ken, thank you. I think it's very impressive that your, your project links to the natural resource and timber past industries to create innovative wood products that will be applied in housing solutions and also create new workforce opportunities. So thank you. So this slide, I just wanted to present the, summarize the terms of the tenants in common agreement. It covers the, the, a new ownership structure for Terminal Two Lot Two, which is approximately forty acres. As, as, as Ken explained, the, the T2 zoning is limited to river dependent and river related uses. So the, the terminal, the tenants in common joint ownership of the adjusted Lot Two allows flexibility for industrial use at the Innovation Campus. The port will own ninety-nine percent interest and Prosper will own a one percent tenants in common interest. The financials are, are very nominal. The purchase price is one dollar. And also the port will provide a five thousand dollar payment to cover Prosper administrative costs. The port will identify Prosper and we have no liability related to the project or the property. The port is responsible for all property management costs and entitled to all revenue. Prosper will become a co-grantee under the EDA grant. And the port and, and Prosper will partner on economic development activities to support the Innovation Campus. Next slide. And that's, that's the summary. And this is Jen, I request approval for acquisition of a tenant in common interest at Terminal Two with the Port of Portland per the terms of the tenant in common agreement. And we're available for any questions.
Great. Thank you very much. That was a great presentation and it's a very exciting project. I think, I think it's just, it hits, it hits a number of notes that I think everybody will be really excited about. Would anybody like to ask any questions or comment? Any of the commissioners?
Sure. This is Commissioner Alvarez. Really appreciate the presentation and it's really exciting for us to contemplate the redevelopment of just waterfront property in Portland. Ken, really appreciate the presentation, Brian, Joe as well. It's just, it's really exciting to contemplate innovation campuses and, and the role that they can play in bringing people together, bringing industry together, particularly in our traded sectors and, and also laying a pathway forward for, you know, how Portland reimagines its waterfront. Being that it is a waterfront property and just my personal interest in, in all things water, I guess the question that I would offer to Ken, just curious, and as well as, as the other partner folks, if any consideration had been given to preserving some level of water access that might be usable either by maybe some restaurants that would serve the people that'd be working on this innovation campus or perhaps one day someone might want to kayak into, into work and kind of go across the river and, and get across. Which is curious, knowing that there is some existing dock infrastructure in place. Any consideration given to the use that facility like that might work to also support creation of jobs and also provide food and tasty beverages for folks?
Absolutely. We, we will still retain the waterside portion of Lot One, which will continue to serve as the Corps of Engineers dredge base. We also may have seen a large military ship recently there. Merad, which is essentially a division that prepares for natural disasters as well as wartime, you know, peaceful time, but they have ships in reserve for wartime. They've entered in a contract with the port to store ships, which also cycle through to vigor, often get repaired. The latest one that was there was the Bob Hope. It's a class of ship named after Bob Hope. And it ended up going across to the Indian Ocean. And when it comes back, it will go to, it will go into dry dock for service. So it produces additional spinoff jobs. And I could see over time, maybe we're able to introduce some other, you know, maritime, you know, uses there. And, and this doesn't restrict that. We do think along Front Avenue, there is a bit of a food desert right there. Our flex industrial space will have some food offering every, by code, we can do about three thousand square feet. And that's what we're planning on doing.
Excellent. Thank you so much for the answer.
Great. Thank you. Anybody else have anything? Okay, if not, thanks again for the great presentation and the exciting project. We're happy to partner with you. Would anybody like to make a motion to approve resolution number seven five zero three regarding acquisition of the tenant in common interest? Great. Or is that another gesture?
Trying to get my phone to work, my computer to work, motion to, yeah, accept.
Great. Thank you. And do we have a second?
Second.
Great. Thank you. All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Next item is number seven. This is an action item. It's a board resolution approving the loan to Leroy Kimball, Leroy and Kimball LLC. And Oscar Novello and Kay Little are going to present on this item. Welcome, gentlemen.
Okay. Sorry about that. I suddenly started having technical difficulties at the worst possible time. Good afternoon, Chair Cruz, Commissioners and Executive Director Branham. My name is Kay Little. I am the Asset and Investment Manager here at Prosper Portland. And I will be joined today by Oscar Novello, who is one of our Senior Business Finance Officers. I'm happy to be here today after so many months of working with the borrowers and a team of Prosper Portland staff, including legal, who worked on this loan. And we're also joined today by Jay Kim, who is one of the loan guarantors. He'll be available to answer any questions from the board regarding this project. Next slide, please. So we're here today requesting your approval, your approval of the terms of a special authority loan to Leroy and Kimball LLC in an amount not to exceed three million dollars for the build out of a food hall to be located at nine seventeen Southwest Alder Street. Next slide, please. Before we dive into the details of this project, first I want to provide a bit of context setting information. And then Oscar will share details regarding the project and the loan term, much of which is also captured in your board report. And then we'll like to invite up the borrower or the guarantor, Mr. Kim, to share a few words and to take any questions from the board. Next slide, please. So your action on this loan helps to deliver on several advanced Portland objectives, including supporting activation of ground floor commercial spaces in the central city as we seek to support a vibrant downtown. And also in promoting equitable wealth creation by allowing entrepreneurs to start and grow businesses through supporting both the hall operators and then multiple food cart operators so that they can then access key downtown space. Next slide, please. Before I hand it over to Oscar, I also want to highlight how this loan builds on a couple of broader discussions that we've been having with the board over the last couple of years. First, this loan request builds on the loan or the board's approval last month to allocate the strategic investment fund into three key areas of investment. Now, we have our small business lending, real estate lending, and then net operating income. Per the board's approved financial investment guidelines, the strategic investment fund will be used for income generating activities, operational and capital needs that are in alignment with Prosper Strategic and Financial Sustainability Plan objectives. This loan, which is focused on supporting the growth of small business, would draw from the business lending portion of that fund's allocation. Secondly, my team, together with legal and, and in alignment with some community input that we received, are drafting significant changes to our commercial property redevelopment loan program guidelines. And we anticipate that we're going to return to you for consideration of those new guidelines later on this fall. So those proposed changes will be based on the input that we've received as part of the strategic investment fund discussions with industry partners and community input on access to capital needs and gaps in the market. So that's why we're here today seeking approval of this loan, because that program is still under development. And so we wanted to bring this as a special authority loan while we're still finishing up our work on those new programs, guidelines. So with that, I'd like to hand it over to Oscar, who will now walk us through the project and the loan terms in greater detail.
Thank you, Kay. And good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Oscar Novello. And I'm very happy to be here with you today to present the Flock. The Flock Food Hall is a project, excuse me, that is located on the corner of Ninth and Alder. It's a block south of Darcelle Fifteen Plaza, or what was previously called O'Brien Square. The food hall will be located on a portion of the ground floor of the Ritz Carlton Mixed Use Project. As you may be aware, that development is on block two sixteen, which was once home to a food cart pod known as Alder Food, Alder Street Food Carts. Next slide, please. The bar is Leroy and Kimball, which is a partnership of three gentlemen, Jay Kim, who's joining us today and you'll meet him later. We also have Daniel Lee involved in the project and Stephen Fang. The LLC has entered into a fifteen-year master lease with a building owner and has rights for two additional five-year terms for a total of twenty-five years. The space they're leasing will support the construction of an eight thousand two hundred and twenty-six square foot food hall, which will offer ten spaces for small local food entrepreneurs. It will have eight spaces together with a bar and coffee area. And as you may have read in some of the press coverage of this space, the spaces are fully leased with one vendor having two spaces. Flock will offer indoor as well as outdoor seating with garage doors that open up in the summer, which will make it ideal for outdoor pop-up events and support downtown activation such as those hosted at Director Park over the summer. Next slide, please. Okay, so a little bit about the numbers. The total project build out is just under eight point eight million dollars. The sources include a substantial equity investment from the borrowers with a public-private leverage ratio of one to one point nine three. So what that simply means is that for every public dollar, we are leveraging almost two dollars of private funds. The uses include two, two million, one hundred forty-seven, seven hundred fifty-three dollars in interim financing, which is composed of two, two different buckets. One is a nine hundred and twenty-nine thousand tenant improvement landlord allowance. And the second one is composed of a one point two million letter of credit. And I'll explain a little bit more about both in a bit. The landlord allowance will be reimbursed in three stages. The letter of credit is made up of borrower funds that are, that have been placed in a Washington Trust Bank, bank account in favor of the landlord. As with the landlord allowance, these funds, meaning the letter of credit funds, will also be released in three stages. It is, it is important to note that upon receiving these funds, the borrower will be required to apply them towards the repayment of the Prosper Portland loan. And, excuse me, it's also important to note that these funds will be repaid within two and a half years. Next slide, please. The loan amount will be three million dollars to be used for construction costs related to the tenant improvement build out, which is anticipated to occur within the next several months. The loan will carry a one percent fee and six and a half interest rate, six and a half percent interest rate. The loan repayment will come primarily from the business operations with triple net rents, meaning, you know, utilities, janitorial services, maintenance. utilities, uh, janitorial services, maintenance, common area, kitchen equipment, all these other extra um, costs being, uh, applied above and beyond the, the rent. The rent price for each of the ten vendors at the flock will be based on location of the pod, the space within the hall along with other factors. So the rents might be a little different, but they're very similar as well. The loan maturity term is ten years and it carries a twenty-five year amortization. Because much of our loan is financing interim needs, our three million dollar loan will decrease to approximately eight hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars within, again, approximately two and a half years. There are also a couple of important conditions to close, uh, that I want to note. The first one would be that we are requiring project budgets, updated project budgets, updated plans and and updated executed operating agreement. And we're also asking the borrower to, um, provide an agreement, excuse me, to agree to obtain a subordination uh, non-disturbance and atonement agreement, um, also known as a S N D A from the landlord's, um, lender. And this is to ensure that the ongoing business operations, uh, can continue in case ownership or financing partners change for whatever reason. Next slide, please. Thank you. In honor of the Alder Street Food Carts, Flock, uh, Flock Hall will support nine predominantly, uh, people of color vendors to expand their reach within a key downtown market. These businesses include, uh, today, Birria La Plaza, Artly Coffee, Prime Tap House, Chubby Bunny, Suzu, Suzaku, King John Grilling, Queen Mama, San Yu Holdings, they have two spots, and finally Zapinto Thai Exclusive. The borrower will comply with Prosper Portland Business and Workforce Equity Policy requirements. Uh, next slide, please. And with that, we'd like to reiterate our recommendation and request for the board to approve a special authority loan to Leroy and Kimball LLC in the amount not to exceed three million dollars for the build out of the Flock Food Hall located at nine seventeen Southwest Alder Street. And with that, we'd like to open it up for questions and invite, uh, J, Mr. Jay Kim. Um, and I don't know, uh, the other two partners are present, but at least I know we have Jay Kim. To ma- to make some comments and and thank you very much. We're, I'll take any questions you may have.
Great, thank you. Do the Commissioners have any questions? Pretty quiet. Okay. Um, I raised all my questions at the briefing, so I think we're, I think we're good. Uh, Mr. Kim, did you want to say anything? Uh, we can't hear you. Think you're still muted.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, see, thank you.
We want to thank you guys for spending, you know, giving us this, you guys, um, the Commissioners. Um, wanted to kind of share a little story about how we got here and we created this place as an intention of being an inclusive and space for only our, especially our vendors. As minorities ourselves, it was clear that when we re-agreeing to revitalize this space, that we want opportunity to other minority business owners. It's also our, they're all by pop, this is something we plan on committing to do. Our plan is not just create a call to, uh, create a platform for the bi community and entrepreneurs to showcase their learning talents, their culture and all their, all the, watching their businesses inclusive supported environment. Uh, we work hard to lower the barrier tree with window and support opportunities to customize their space and outbound communication collecting names, uh, versus off sharing, individual financial.
Mister, Mister Kim, we're, we're not, we're not, we don't have a great connection for some reason, just want to let you know.
Okay, um, I'll be quick, um, ultimately to come from wealth accumulation for, uh, for themselves and their families, and we hope that this can be a model for all businesses moving forward.
Great, thank you very much. All right, any, uh, great, any, any, uh, last minute questions from the Commissioners? Nope. Okay. Would anybody like to, uh, make a motion to approve action item number seven? Uh, this is resolution number seven, five, zero, four, uh, regarding Leroy and Kimball.
Still moved.
Thank you. You have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Great, thanks very much, and, uh, thanks for your good work to everybody on this project, and, uh, we look forward to seeing it when it is in place. So thank you. Okay. Uh, next up is item number eight. It's also an action item. Approving the terms of a special authority loan to Short Stack Mississippi LLC in an amount not to exceed three million five hundred thousand for redevelopment of real property located at ten seventeen North Revere Street. Approving an exception to the Construction Business Workforce Equity Policy. And Oscar Novello and Kay Little will present on this matter as well, so, thank you.
All right, Chair Cruz, Commissioners, uh, Executive Director Branham, I'm back again, Kay Little, uh, Oscar will be joining me after this. Uh, fairly happy to be bringing you multiple items today. Uh, it really is a reflection of the hard work that Oscar and the rest of the lending team have done, especially during this moment when a lot of the conventional lending market uh, and interest rates are particularly challenging to small businesses and and projects like this alike, so. Um, we're also joined today by Jesse Ledesma, uh, who can answer any questions from the board regarding the project. Um, or the short stack model for delivering missing middle income housing, so I will make sure that she has an opportunity to speak with you today as well. Uh, next slide, please. Um, so we're here today requesting your approval of the terms of a special authority loan to Short Stack Mississippi LLC in an amount not to exceed, uh, three and a half million dollars for the redevelopment of a property located at ten seventeen North Revere Street. And also to approve an exemption to the workforce equity portion of our construction business and workforce equity policy. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, similar to our last presentation, uh, well, I'll start by giving you a little additional background information. Um, to, and then Oscar will handle the details, um, of the project and the loan term. Uh, next slide, please. And so your action on this loan helps us to deliver on two actions outlined in Advanced Portland under Objective three point eight, um, to address housing production across a continuum of affordability. Um, first, to help stabilize community by investing in mixed income housing production, particularly in communities with significant demographic and income diversity. And second, to explore and expand production methods that can streamline and increase completion of workforce housing, uh, which is really at the core to, uh, the short stack concept, so we'll learn more about that. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, and again, I want to highlight for the board that this request is in line with your approval last month of the Strategic Investment Fund allocations. Uh, with this loan request, we're going to be drawing from the real estate lending portion of that allocation. Uh, now, as you may know, in the budget shown and in the staff report, uh, there are sufficient resources in the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year revised budget and the Strategic Investment Fund Property Redevelopment Appropriation to disburse this loan. However, the specific project line item proposed will include a recommended technical adjustment and the revised, uh, two budget transferring budget from the acquisition perm project line item to match the three point five million amount of this loan. And again, I'll note that we are in the midst of preparing significant changes to our Commercial Property Redevelopment Loan Program Guidelines and anticipate returning to you with those, um, later on this fall. One of those proposed changes, which is moving away from using the prime, um, rate as our base interest rate are reflected in both the special authority loans before you today. Um, so with that background, um, I'll turn it over to Oscar, who will walk us through the project and the loan terms in greater detail.
Yeah, thank you, Kay. Well, I'm back, uh, good afternoon, Commissioners. Short Stack is a project that is located, as Kay mentioned, at, uh, ten seventeen North Revere Street. Um, while the property is in the north northeast area, uh, we are proposing the investment of strategic investment funds rather than interstate corridor TIF resources. Uh, and this is to keep cool our funding and allocation commitments of the North Northeast Community Development Initiative Action Plan. The borrower has been working on a handful of short stack project across the region as a replicable mass timber housing model intended to replicability, uh, to, to, for replicability across sites, uh, within a focus, with a focus on the missing middle infill housing. Um, affordable to households earning sixty to a hundred percent of ar- area-wide median income or AMI. This particular project will be located on a fifteen thousand square foot lot with the appropriate zoning. The property currently has a small eight hundred and eighty square foot single-family home on it uh, that has been vacant since prior to the borrower's purchase of the lot. The property is located near Mississippi Avenue, which supports tenants walking to retailers and businesses along the corridor. Uh, it also supports, uh, access to transit options and a reduced need for parking. Next slide, please. Um, yep, the borrower is Short Stack Mississippi LLC, which is a partnership of Jesse Ledesma and Anna McKay, uh, both whom are joining us today. The borrower is partnering with the current owner, um, Janine Furpo Living Trust, who will be one of the members of the development. The project includes thirty-six units where twenty-nine of the units are restricted to families making under eighty percent of AMI, and seven of, of the units will be available at market rents. The project and short stack model are also focused on the provision of family housing with twenty-three bedroom units and eight two-bedroom units. Uh, Short Stack uses a mass timber construction approach to support a replic- replicability. I can't say that word. Um, and to expedite the construction process and time length. The borrower has tenant team partnerships with the Somali-American Council of Oregon as well as the Catholic Charities of Oregon with a focus on supporting culturally specific communities served by these organizations. The borrower also partnered with National Association of Minority Contractors of Oregon, or NAMCO, uh, to offer a mass timber training module for NAMCO members. Next slide, please. Okay, the financials, the total project cost is, uh, fourteen point two million. The sources and uses table shows, shown here reflect the construction phase. The borrower anticipates closing on financing by late twenty twenty-three, later, later this year, and beginning construction in twenty twenty-four with units, uh, to rent and stabilization predicted to be in twenty twenty-six. The construction loans from Stern Bank, Stern's Bank and the Oregon Community Foundation will be paid off after completion of construction. Payoff and permanent debt will come from a five and a half million dollar loan from Network for Oregon Affordable Housing, or NOAA. Um, the Oregon Housing and Community Services Loan is, um, is, is an interesting loan. It's, it's actually structured as a zero percent interest, uh, shared first lien loan for the initial twenty years, uh, of affordability and will be considered satisfied or paid off, if you will, at year twenty, when the affordability restrictions are extended for another twenty years. Prosper Portland will be in a lean position behind both the permanent lenders, uh, based on the financial stack largely coming from the affordable housing financing and related um, regulated performance requirements in affordable housing. Next slide, please. The loan amount will be three and a half million dollars, and it will, it will be used for construction costs related to the development of the project, which is anticipated, uh, to occur through December twenty twenty-five. Prosper Portland's loan will begin as a construction loan and convert to a twenty-year permanent loan upon project stabilization. During the construction phase, our loan will be subordinate to the primary construction lenders, uh, which are Stern's Bank and Oregon Housing and Community Services, as well as the Oregon Community Foundation. During the permanent phase, which is the next phase, our loan will be subordinate to the primary permanent lender, which will be net, network for Or- Oregon Affordable Housing, or as I mentioned earlier, NOAA, as well as Oregon Housing and Community Services. That's the loan that has zero percent, zero payments and in, 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 is satisfied within twenty years when the affordability is extended. During the term of the construction, the loan interest, um, will be six point three six percent, while the permanent interest rate will be four point three six percent, which is based off of the ten-year treasury note yield at the time of underwriting. With the four point three six percent interest rate, the project return over a ten-year period is less than the target return identified for the Strategic Investment Fund in the Updated Financial Sustainability Plan. However, based on the structure of the loan, interest payments over the first five years align to cash return targets anticipated in the financial, in the Financial Sustainability Plan. Loan repayment will come primarily from lease revenues tied to the project. I do understand that prior to this meeting, uh, Chairman Cruz expressed concern with the proposed interest rate relative to our Strategic Investment Fund investments and Financial Sustainability Plan. We welcome board direction in this issue, on this issue, I'm sorry, um, such as any suggested interest rate adjustments tied to performance of the project. Um, next slide, please. Uh, the short stack model is intended to promote inclusive growth and provide access to affordable and middle-income housing units with a focus on families and family-sized units. Borrower will comply with business equity program requirements. However, the second action before the board today represents an exemption from the workforce training and hiring program component of Prosper Portland's Construction Business Workforce Equity Policy. In lieu of complying with the, um, workforce equity policy, borrower, the borrower will contractually agree to the following as conditions of the loan. Uh, there are three, three conditions. The first one is that good faith effort uh, will be exercised to reg- to register subs in key trades as state training agents. Uh, this is to build the pipeline of registered subs, um, and be better prepared for future public bid opportunities. Number two, uh, track hours worked on site by minority and or women workers. And number three, a good faith effort to engage with local pre-apprenticeship programs. The resolution speaks to these agreements in greater detail. Next slide, please. With that, we'd like to reiterate our recommendation and request for the board to approve a special authority loan to Short Stack Mississippi in an amount not to exceed three and a half million dollars for the development of thirty-six you, a thirty-six unit mixed income, um, including middle-income housing project at ten seventeen North Revere Street. And approve an exemption to the workforce training and hiring policy portion of the Construction Business and Workforce Equity Policy. And with that, we'd like to open it up for any questions and invite Jesse Ledesma to make, uh, comments. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you for the presentation. So, uh, Ms. Ledesma, would you like to go ahead?
I would. Thank you all. Thank you, Oscar, for presenting that information, and I really appreciate, appreciate the opportunity to be here in front of you all. Um, may I share my slide, may I share my screen for a short presentation?
Yeah, that's, that's fine. Uh, Justin, can you assist with that or?
All right, are we seeing this?
Yeah. Great.
All right, and Director Branham was at the, uh, Housing Summit yesterday, and so a lot of what I'm going to cover fairly quickly here might be familiar to what you heard at the conference yesterday, but I just want to start by acknowledging that it is so difficult to build housing in Portland right now, and that's for several overlapping reasons that I'm sure you all are familiar with, including inflationary, uh, building costs, high interest rates, um, kind of a tough climate in Portland to be building in right now, and it's leading to an increasing shortage in housing in our city. The city of Portland recently released their housing needs analysis and determined that we need to build a hundred and twenty thousand new units by twenty forty-five to meet our current shortage and our projected growth need. And nearly thirty percent of those units are targeted at middle-income households. And as you're all well aware, we typically define middle income as sixty to a hundred and twenty percent area median income, or AMI. Although for our purposes with the Short Stack project, we more narrowly define that as between sixty and a hundred percent AMI. And while there is an enormous and growing need to serve the lowest-income members of our community in that zero to sixty percent AMI range, there does exist a robust affordable housing finance infrastructure to build regulated affordable housing. And in theory, or in a strong market, private equity solves for building market-rate housing to serve households over a hundred and twenty percent AMI. But there are not many tools available to finance middle-income housing in that sixty to a hundred and twenty, or sixty to a hundred percent AMI range, and that's what we're really focused on with the Short Stack project. The good news is that the city of Portland has great capacity for middle-density zones, and middle-density or the building scale, uh, is kind of the other side of the missing middle equation. And this is a map showing development capacity, not actual developed buildings in the city of Portland. So if we exclude the central city district, which clearly has the highest density available, our centers and corridors account for sixty-four percent of residential development capacity, and most of that is in the east and north districts, in those kind of mid-pink density zones. And these typically allow for three-to-five-story residential structures. The challenge is that building at that smaller scale is quite inefficient, and we have wonderful examples across our city of really good-looking and effective placemaking buildings at that scale, but especially in today's market where, uh, costs are where they're at, it's very difficult to build kind of custom jewel box developments that are at that scale. And so the Short Stack project we're proposing is a mass timber replicable housing product designed as a dynamic kit of parts that can flex and configure on different missing middle zoning and lot conditions. And this is, uh, the primary Short Stack team, although not everyone on our team is represented here. So my partner Anna McKay and I are co-developers, both female-owned development firms. And we've put together a really creative and diverse bench for our team, and we really consider development to be a team sport. We don't do this by ourselves. And the partnerships we've created and the relationships we've created in this process are the most valuable piece of this work effort. I should mention that our consultant team is comprised of over seventy percent uh, MWSB certified firms, and our construction team at this moment, we are targeting over thirty percent COVID-certified firms. So what makes a short stack? It's not a groundbreaking new building technology, but we're looking at three-to-four-story strut walk-up structures that are all residential, with residential on the ground floor as well. And as I mentioned, we are prototyping the short stack concept across multiple sites. So we're starting with the Northeast Mississippi project that we're talking about today, thirty-six units in Northeast Portland. We'll follow with thirty-five units at Southeast Belmont in twenty-eight. We're also developing, uh, an affordable homeownership cottage cluster product that we're prototyping on a site in Milwaukee. And then we have two partner development sites shown above in pink. The rent comparison is an important one when we've spent a lot of time analyzing. So this slide is showing where the different AMI affordable rents land across the different unit types and comparing those to market rents, which are the dashed yellow line. And the market rents in this comparison include a blend of both old and newer product and are not meant to represent the very highest end of the market, but where we might compete. And the short stack rents blend in the middle in that dark pink, uh, bolded line and are a mixture of regulated units at sixty or eighty percent AMI rent and unrestricted units on certain projects. And as Oscar mentioned, we're really focused on delivering family-sized two- and three-bedroom units. So how do we offset the lower rents? How do we build more efficiently? The short stack concept really is about going back to the fundamentals of efficient building design and construction, and again, avoiding that custom jewel box development model where each building is its own special thing. We keep our units simple and repeatable, and we're really, uh, hitting the sweet spot between efficient units and marketability and desirability of the unit layouts. And it's certainly aided by the deliberate neighborhood choices that we've made for the sites that I mentioned, being located in walkable, mixed-use neighborhoods, near to schools and grocery stores, and served by high transit. We stack the units as needed, depending on zoning or height constraints and the desired unit mix. And we configure our buildings and the site layout in a courtyard configuration, so we open up the middle. And that move achieves a few things. It fosters human interaction and connection and connection to the outdoors. But most importantly, we avoid the double-loaded corridor condition that we see in a lot of new housing product. And each unit has daylight and natural ventilation on two or three sides. We also spread out the costs, uh, across the model, and the model mo- more or less repeats itself. So what does that mean? Roughly eighty percent-ish of our design is the base, uh, short stack concept, and the other twenty percent accounts for variations across the site. So not only do we save on architecture and engineering across multiple projects, but we save on legal structuring, project management, pre-construction, financing costs, financial modeling, all of those expenses are spread across multiple smaller deals to make each individual project more cost-efficient. Mass timber certainly helps. These are photos of a recently completed mass timber affordable housing project that Anna built in collaboration with Catholic Charities of Oregon called Child's House. And it's a great precedent for the short stack concept because it really proved that mass timber multifamily can be built faster and with more pricing certainty. We also really appreciate the lower carbon outcome of building with wood, especially with mass timber. And we have the ability to track the sustainable forestry practices of the mass timber producers, and we're partnering with the nonprofit Sustainable Northwest as our wood advisor in that role. We also just love the aesthetics. So on the bottom right photo, you see the exposed, uh, cross-laminated timber ceiling, which brings that warmth and natural material to the unit interiors. So what does it cost? How does the short stack product compare? On the left, you see in the pink the, uh, regulated affordable average cost per unit. And this is taken from Portland Housing Bureau's bond-financed cost averages. And on the right, you see in green, market-rate cost averages that were taken from the BAE Urban Economics, uh, recent study for the inclusionary housing calibration study. And some of the ways that Short Stack is achieving the price point that we're showing here, and we've been very determined to come in less than four hundred thousand per square foot. And again, keep in mind that seventy percent of our units are larger two- and three-bedroom units, is that we save significantly on financing costs, developer fee, legal fees, as compared to the typical low-income housing tax credit or metro bond-financed regulated affordable project. And we also are saving on a lot of the kind of, uh, amenities and, and the race-to-the-top approach that market-rate developers have had to do in recent years to hit those very top-of-the-market rents. The short stack model is really hitting the middle between the typical, on the left, the hunt, like, more publicly financed, regulated affordable projects, and on the left, where we show more privately financed kind of conventional development model. And these are just showing some examples of, of what other sources fit on this spectrum. It's a tough needle to thread, kind of hitting in the middle here, because we often have some conflict, right, between public benefits and budget constraints or other regulations that might be misaligned between sources. But we've spent, uh, the last year and a half really putting together a stack of financing, including some select public sources that really complement and work with our model. So impact equity is out there, and it's really critical to this effort as well. Anna and I are pleased to have raised a six-million-dollar impact equity fund that we closed last year. And we have a lot of admiration, appreciation for our equity investors who really understand the mission and our capital, our patient capital partners, who are comfortable with the long-term hold that's necessary for this model. Impact debt is a lot more difficult to find. As Oscar mentioned, and you may have heard from others, our lenders and banks regionally and in our state have really tightened their lending and have, uh, much less lending capacity than they did a couple of years ago. In addition to just the crazy interest rate environment that we're facing right now, there are not many banks who are willing to think creatively or who are willing to, um, lend on projects that don't neatly fit the box of regulated affordable LITC or completely, uh, market rate. So that has been a big challenge in this process. So how can Prosper Portland support the short stack model? Well, the loan that we're requesting today for the Short Stack Mississippi project is very critical, um, and is really, uh, the, kind of the linchpin to making our financing stack work because it's unlocked our ability to utilize the Network for Oregon Affordable Housing Permanent Loan um, within their sizing constraints, which is a beneficial loan product. And the, uh, loan terms that Oscar presented are really what makes this model work, such that we can prototype the short stack model at the Short Stack Mississippi, uh, site specifically, with the goal of really being able to finance this in the future, utilizing that public, uh, or sorry, the private impact equity and more conventional debt once the model is proven. And we have, uh, several public partners and foundation partners involved in this project, and we value all of these partnerships. And we have, uh, much appreciation, admiration for Prosper Portland and Oregon Housing Community Services and Metro locally, who have really stepped up to think creatively, how can we finance middle housing in a new and innovative way? And I have to commend the state of Oregon, there's quite a bit of momentum right now across our state to support innovative housing models and housing models that support middle-income, uh, households in particular. In conclusion, I think we all agree that we want to give people and businesses more reasons to stay in Portland. We have so many advantages to our city, and we do face challenges right now. And attainable housing is just such a critical part of that equation. And so we thank you for consideration of this loan request and, uh, the support of the Short Stack projects. Happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you so much. Uh, do any of the commissioners have any questions or comments? Oh, Mr. Alvarez. Looks like maybe you could.
S- Serena. Oh, go ahead.
I, I did not have a comment.
Oh, you didn't? Okay, I thought I saw your hand. Okay, thanks.
I would like to dive a little bit into the exemption so I can understand them a little bit better, because I'm not understanding the why. Because right now in our state, or especially in the city of Portland and the areas in which we're building, we have more people of color there and, and women that are able to participate than ever before. So I don't understand that, and when we say that, we can't find, to me, those are just excuses and doing performative gestures. And some of the things that you're saying that you're doing, that you would do in, instead of, you should be doing anyway, because that just normalizes and operationalizes the work.
Yeah, I will, um, uh, defer to, to Jessie in a second, but I mean, the, from the staff perspective, the, the response I can provide, um, Commissioner, is that the borrower did express that the, uh, contracts were already in place, and therefore it made it difficult for them to have to go back out and rebid the projects, potentially increasing the costs. Excuse me.
Hey, Oscar.
Well, that was something that they should have done, pre, done anyway, because as we're building in the state, in our city, um, we know that those things need to be done. And so to me, then that means that the effort was not done ahead of time. And so now, then you just need to go back and backtrack like we've asked other folks to. And at the state of Oregon, we do ask folks to do that too. But to me, those are just, um, excuses that are, that you can't use, uh, in this day and age.
Um, Commissioner, I'm, I'm going to ask Lisa Abouf to chime in and, and Willie, if you want to respond to that one. Um, and I, I think, well, yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to be super clear about what's, so the, um, they are not exempted from business equity, so their, kind of, their business equity, the MBE, DBE, WBE performance will hold. What they are asking for an exemption from is the workforce training and hiring program. I'm going to try and get through it really quickly, like, and they are self-reporting because they are asking to not do it through apprenticeship, kind of qualified apprenticeship programs because of the scale of the project. Um, prevailing wage is not triggered, and so because of the scale of the project, they are asking to be exempted from the apprenticeship reporting requirements and are self-performing on the minority and women on the job site requirement. I just, that's the, to, I hear you, I just wanted to make sure everybody was clear, because it can get down in the weeds really rapidly.
No, no, and I was clear on that, but for me, that still, that still can be done. Again, we, we have to stop excusing those things when we know that these things should be normalized in the work and when you're coming forward to do this, especially in our communities, and it's such a big need. And we have all these different programs who are willing and able and ready for these things and looking for these opportunities as we need to start getting folks ready to be able to go to work with these internships. And regardless of the scale of the project, to me, there's just no excuse, and I wouldn't support it.
Commissioner Myers, were you going to add something on this?
Yeah, mine's going to be a little lengthy. First up, I just wanted to thank Kay and Oscar and Jesse for your, uh, all, all of your presentation. We, we had several conversations on this, and hopefully I'll address Commissioner Stoudamire Wesley's point on this. The, the nature of this project and the, the fact that it's a small project, some subs will certainly have a challenge uh, meeting the apprenticeship hours, just based on the, the scope that they're awarded on these projects. I believe that the commitments that are made by the, the borrower and, and their team uh, meet with the nature of the workforce training and hiring half of our, uh, CPW E, uh, policy uh, by utilizing graduates from the apprenticeship readiness programs, um, and working with those programs and by contributing to the, to the pool of apprentice-ready workforce. Um, for those that aren't going to be registered with, uh, state recognized apprenticeship programs. That will also prepare the subcontractor for the trends that we are seeing in public contracting as it applies to apprenticeship utilization. Um, I believe that these commitments do, uh, do exactly that, and I hope that our compliance staff, and this is my question, I hope that our compliance sta- staff will work with the subs to maximize the efforts to that alignment of our policies. Um, and I would also ask that we work with WSI and the apprenticeship readiness programs uh, to identify if there's any additional burden on our CBOs, uh, that may need additional funding to, uh, to, to serve the needs that we're creating here.
Can I just say one thing, and I understand what you're saying, but here we go again with no, not having consistency on what we're asking folks to do. And here we are, to me, this is a setback to what we've, you know, what the community has been asking for. And so now we're not doing that. Um, we, this just like, it just goes back, it just, I'm sorry, this brings up things from the past for me. Um, that here we are again with someone saying that they can't do this, when yes, it can't, it should and could have been done. Um, and so, yeah. No.
Commissioner, I, I want to, um, talk a little bit about who is saying that they can't do it. Um, because we had a lot of, there were a lot of conversations that were had, um.
There might have been, um, Kimberly, but you know, we talked about it, apprenticeship programs and different things. We have lots of those, and that could have been worked along the way.
Well, um, yeah.
I just, I just, it just, it just doesn't feel good to me.
Totally.
I'm just being honest, it doesn't, it just doesn't feel good at all. And even to hear folks say that, it just does not. And just being honest, it doesn't, it just doesn't feel good at all. And even to hear folks say that, it just does not feel good at all.
Yeah, um, totally understand and, and respect um, the, the perspective. I want to note who in particular gave us feedback around this approach. And it was in particular, the um, minority contractors um, who felt that the apprenticeship programs um, are a challenge to get into. When you have a workforce that's five or six people, um, and maybe even less. And so in order for them to get to a place where they can scale and actually participate in an apprenticeship program, there needs to be an on-ramp to scale. Um, and so this felt like a um, proposal that pushed those um, you know, NAMCO members and other partners um, who have largely been or have been a hundred percent in residential development, not on the commercial side. Um, and so this is helping move them into a place where they would be appro- uh, you know, be, be ready for apprenticeship programs. Um, and asking them to take on some of the reporting. Um, but we got very strong feedback directly talking to not just um, through our development um, potential borrower, but through um, the uh, you know, contractors, minority contractors who were saying that this provides an opportunity for their businesses um, to, to get into potentially an expanded area. And so I think um, that was something that we wanted to verify directly um, as part of our due diligence. Um, and I think there was even, and um, I don't want to put um, any of our commissioners on the spot, but this was a, a lively conversation that we had during some of the briefings. But um, I think that there were even comments from some of our MBE certified firms who felt like even asking for this for some of these very small businesses, small minority-owned businesses is even asking quite a bit. So they were asking for less. So um, I'm, I, I hear you. I just want to be transparent in terms of what some of that due diligence was and who um, was providing feedback uh, to our staff as we were looking at this question.
Yeah, I, I appreciate your feedback, but it doesn't feel good to me. And for me, um, when I've gone to certain meetings with different um, folks of color that are in this field, minority contractors, um, I've never heard them say that. It's almost like, you know, because we're always looking for folks to come into the field. And so now all of a sudden, we're not gonna use them. Yeah.
Commissioner Myers, you had your hand up.
Yeah, just one, one more quick little follow-up. And um, I, I believe that uh, I, I, I hear what you're saying, Commissioner, a- and I am absolutely usually in opposition of any kind of an exemption. I don't view this as a full exemption. I view this as a partial exemption uh, with, with commitments uh, that go back to the nature of this. Um, the apprenticeship uh, utilization requirements are still going to be uh, uh, observed to, to a point where they're already uh, contractors that are already state-recognized training agents. But we're also going to uh, encourage that uh, we, we want to see that growth. So the contractors don't just do this one job and disappear because they haven't grown into a market that has evolved. Um, to, to, we're seeing these, these expectations, as you well know, um, from Salem, we're starting to see them uh, apply to a lot of transportation projects and uh, and other projects that the apprenticeship utilization requirements where you have to be a state-registered training agent. This is that incubator space because of the size of this project. I believe that this is that incubator space that we can create in the construction industry to really get contractors thinking that direction and onboarding that direction and uh, really create a, you know, maybe look further at our policy to make sure that that uh, product that we're offering is, is usable in that space to, to help build up our base of contractors that we need to have uh, to really deliver what's coming.
Well, and my thing to that is, you know, we've had folks with commitments before and those folk, those commitments did not come to fruition um, again and again and again. So again, it just seems like, here we go again. With people saying, we'll do one thing and that doesn't come through, and then we're back at the starting gate.
Okay, uh, just to clarify, so my understanding from this conversation is that the minority contractors actually advocated for this arrangement. Is that correct?
Lisa, can you respond?
Yeah, I think Chair Cruz, I, I don't want to speak to it. I think when Kimberly was referencing it, we had a pretty healthy dialogue when we were, I don't know if you recall, about a year, a year and a half ago, we updated our business and workforce equity policy. And the tension between our workforce equity goals and our business equity goals, this is definitely an issue that came up, which is the obstacles that um, becoming registered and kind of, and accessing apprenticeship programs can put in place for some of our business equity goals. And that tension is real, like that came up over and over and over, like in conversations. I, I do want to honor, I think, one of the conversations we have had with Commissioner Myers, kind of as part of the briefings, is how do we, when we're investing in smaller-scale projects, how do you create in the same way that we have kind of ladders for small businesses moving up? How do you create a pipeline of businesses who are ready for an apprenticeship requirement? And so it's not kind of a all or nothing kind of approach, which is you're in or you're not particularly kind of if, when boldly is kind of being required, when prevailing wage is being required, there's no question, right? Like it's kind of a in this instance, when we are working on smaller-scale residential projects within state kind of requirements, these are actually exempt from prevailing wage. And so it allows for this opportunity, we did sit, and we've pushed kind of a lot on the development team and their general contractor of then how are you building a pipeline? We understand that these may be obstacles for smaller businesses, particularly uh, minority-owned, smaller contractors, but ultimately what, what we have talked about with Commissioner Myers is how do we use projects of this scale to actually kind of build a pipeline of smaller businesses who otherwise would not kind of move into that space of being ready for apprenticeship? So what Kimberly mentioned was part of a broader policy conversation. It is certainly a theme that is also shown up in this particular transaction on a partic- particular projects.
Okay, so my question was, did the minority contractors advocate for this arrangement?
I think what would be worthwhile, I guess, because we haven't heard from Jesse or uh, Anna yet, like I think it would be worthwhile.
Sorry, Lisa, can you speak specifically to the conversation that you had with NAMCO?
Yeah, NAMCO is supportive of this project.
Um, and, and of the exemption.
I did, I didn't talk with Nate directly about the exemption. I talked with Nate about the project and the value proposition of the project to NAMCO members. Um, and the training that um, Short Stack had done with NAMCO members to be able to understand what was the training and what was the partnership.
Okay. So he was. So he was supportive of that? Okay. Was Commissioner Myers gonna add something? Were you gonna add something? No, okay. If any of the other commissioners have any further comments about this issue?
I guess my thing, have we talked to others besides NAMCO? Because there's other minority contractors besides NAMCO.
We have not reached out to individual contractors. We spoke with NAMCO. I spoke with, I, I spoke with NAMCO mostly around the partnership that they had with Short Stack and the training that Short Stack had done with NAMCO to understand what kind of training had happened and what kind of availability they had around the workforce training, given that this is where we were pushing the project was to register their subs for workforce training programs. That's where Nate spoke in support of both the training that they had done and the, the work that they had done with Short Stack and the fact that they saw this as a model and that they were interested in be, in continuing to have a role with workforce training tied to this project and to the Short Stack model. But we haven't talked to, we haven't talked to other organizations representing minority contractors.
Any other questions on this issue? Okay, my question in the um, in the briefing was about the permanent phase interest rate. I thought it was too low. And I suggested uh, maybe we would do a reset at some point or look, look, you know, just basically review the rate down the road, five years, ten years. Did you, Oscar and Kay, did you guys consider that or decide against that? Or what's the status of that?
We definitely will go through that exercise. I felt like in order for us to be really thoughtful and have an opportunity to really kind of understand you know, kind of the project and, and what are those things that we're, we're tracking in order to come up with what that rate would be would probably take a little time before the board meeting. So that's why we were hoping that the board would, would, would require us to make, to, to do that work and that our executive director could then approve whatever that methodology is, as long as it's not adding increased risk to the project or in, into Prosper Portland. Just to give us some time to, to work with the borrower and, and to actually create that, that, that feature that you've asked for.
Got it, okay. Okay, um, okay, I guess I would ask then, um, I don't, so, so there's a couple of different ways we could do this. We could take a vote. Um, we could, just based on the presentation as it is, we could take a vote with some adjustments, uh, number one being the rate uh, uh, issue subject to Kimberly's discretion for further consideration. Um, and maybe also for some further exploration of the uh, workforce issue that we've been discussing. Um, or we could uh, table this for a meeting and maybe revisit it next month if that doesn't uh, disrupt the process and timing of this thing uh, too dramatically. What do folks think about those options?
My understanding from my briefing and from prior conversations from Cafe last week is that this approval was pretty time-critical. So I think I don't want to speak for the borrowers, but I, and for Kay and for Oscar, but that was my understanding.
Okay.
I would like to have a little further more discussion with some other uh, contractors to see how folks are feeling.
Okay. Commissioner Myers?
Yeah, it's my understanding we have a resolution uh, in front of us and either it'll take a motion or an amendment. You know, I, I mean, I think that's the process here. Chair Cruz, with all respect.
Yeah, no, we do. Uh, so the question would be, do we want to, does somebody want to make a move to amend? Uh, or do we want to just vote on it as it is, or do we want to table it? And I think, I'm thinking maybe what we want to do is um, uh, maybe amend uh, to facilitate this rate consideration and maybe encourage the staff to further explore the workforce issue, but otherwise approve the loan as presented. That's, that's what I would suggest and I would uh, make that amendment, or that would, I would make that proposal uh, proposed amendment to the board now.
Chair Cruz, if I could just interrupt a little parliamentary um, guidance, if I could.
Sure, please do.
Let's have, let's have a motion to approve the resolution. And a second for that. And then we can take a motion to amend the resolution per what you've stated. And I think what I've heard is that you would like to add to the resolution that the interest rates will increase at some point during the term and staff will work with the borrower to implement that change to the interest rate. And then once we, and then you will have a vote on that motion, a for, you know, a, a, a move for that motion, a second, a vote on that. And then we would have a vote to approve the resolution as amended.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
I think, I think we ought to also, uh, with deference to Commissioner Stoudemire Wesley, I'd like to also include some language about uh, revisiting this workforce issue. Uh, and perhaps, um, I don't have anything more specific than that, but to the extent that we can um, have staff look at that a little bit further, I think that would be appreciated. So would someone like to uh, make a motion? Why don't we start then, uh, Hope with your suggestion? Uh, I'll accept a motion to approve the resolution as presented.
I say move.
Okay, do we have a second? No?
Um, I'll second. Yeah.
Okay, so we have a second.
Chair Cruz, I think we actually have the order backwards here. We need to, there needs to be a a vote on the first and then a vote on the amended resolution. So if it, it.
Well, that's what I suggested, but
Well, no, I think.
You said we should vote on the resolution as.
Well, we're not gonna vote on the resolution right now. Now we're gonna entertain the motion to amend the resolution that is now properly before the board. So at this point, if you so desire, a commissioner would have, would make a motion to amend the resolutions before you.
Okay, I already did that.
Yeah, second.
Great.
All right, so all, all those in favor of approving the motion as amended, please say aye.
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 Okay, motion passes.
May.
Okay, thank you. Okay, all right, that wraps that up, I guess. Thanks very much. Uh, Ms. Ledesma has, I, if you're still there, thank you uh, for your presentation. And uh, thanks to staff for your good work on this. And we'll look.
I'm sorry, y'all, I'm, I'm not as facile with board interactions. Can somebody tell me what just happened?
Well, we're screwing our communities again.
We approved an amended motion, uh, excuse me, an amended resolution, which basically approves the loan, but with two um, additions, one being uh, staff will uh, look at a rate uh, review um, at a fur- future date and will um, consider that uh, after discussions with you and further uh, consideration of the exact mechanism, which will then be approved by uh, Executive Director Branham. And secondly, um, staff will look at the uh, workforce issue and further explore that. And um, hopefully, uh, we can get a little bit more comfortable with those issues, but that's, that's basically what we approved.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, then, well.
Tom, sorry, I got my head up. Chair Cruz, um, so Lisa, I, I, this is directed towards Lisa, not necessarily on the agenda item, but uh, Lisa, maybe we can reconvene the table we convened and broaden it a bit and uh, maybe include some folks from PBDG Latino built and uh, and uh, Commissioner Stoudemire Wesley and others that were, are in it, have interest in attending. And uh, let's work through this problem again on the workforce.
Would like to attend.
Wait, I have to ask legal counsel if we have three commissioners there. Hope, you have to tell me if we can do that or if we would hold separate meetings. It makes a lot of sense, Commissioner. I just want to make sure that um, we do this appropriately.
Right, yeah, three is a quorum. So we would have, we could hold it as a public meeting if you like, or um, we'll just need to do it.
It's okay, I'll say that.
I, I could, I could sit out a part of one and come in.
I think you need to be there, Commissioner Myers.
We'll figure it out. And I agree, I think we need to reconvene similar to what we did around when we were updating our policy. I think it's
Yeah.
all time to convene, reconvene that group and make sure that if there are other folks or any of the commissioners that you would like to be part of that conversation, will you just email Justin and let him know and we'll make sure they're in the room?
Okay. Can, can I ask a question just from a loan disbursement perspective? So is this, as we dive into the workforce question, is, is, is the dispersing of the loan dependent on, on whether or not other folks are comfortable with us moving forward? I just want to be sure with that as far as closing and funding.
Let's take that quick, let's, yeah, let's, let's take that question in terms, so we'll, we'll get the resolution and then we can have, have that discussion uh, with Hope and so, yeah, okay.
Okay.
Sounds good. Okay, any further comments? Okay, then, well, uh, if that's the case, then the Prosper Portland Board of Commissioners meeting for today is now adjourned. Thanks to everybody for joining us. Have a good day.